I haven't heard of it in a while.
You know, I think there was some time where Gerald McMillan was playing those when he really shouldn't have, and he'd still try to run over people like he was in high school.
We know what happened to Toby in the alumni game.
What was that?
He broke his leg.
Really?
No, you weren't right.
He said it there.
That's why they... No, he graduated.
No.
Or maybe went to...
All right, 7 o'clock, we'll call the meeting order. Mr. Copeland and Mrs. Goldbeck are absent. Any public participation? Recognitions and honors.
We'll probably get to those next month.
Okay. Discussion possible action on minutes of the regular board meeting, September 8th, 2025.
At the front of your packet is the board minute meeting for your inspection.
I'll make a motion we approve the minutes from September 8th, 2025.
I'll say.
All those in favor? Motion passes. Discussion possible action on the following fundraisers: FCC LA snack cart and high school cheer, mini cheer clinic.
The FCC LA snack cart is going to feature student-made or pre-made snacks and baked goods by the fax class. These are set to national fax standards. They'll be sold during passing periods or advisory period and will not interfere with lunch. They're really pretty much to... The funds will be pretty much to make the foods. And then we've got the ever-popular mini cheer clinic that starts this week. It'll be Saturday night or Friday night so that we can try to intimidate Heritage Hall with our awesome crowd. And that's for uniforms and flags and other items.
I'll make a motion if we approve the fundraising request presented. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Discussion possible action on encumbrances including approval and change orders. General fund accounts payable number 1421 through 1455. Payroll 70383 through 70395. Co-op fund accounts payable 70006 through 7009. Building accounts payable 2117 through 2129. Child nutrition accounts payable number 2206. Change order listings in general, co-op, building, and child nutrition. Six treasures report, seven activity fund and custodial report.
Okay, as we go through this on page two of the encumbrances. Kingfisher County... I'd like to point out 1439, Kingfisher County Assessor's Office. That was $145,000 last year. This year it's $65,218.38. The... Down on the Interval Technology Partners LLC, that's security software for the Kingfisher High School.
What number is that?
The Assessors was 1439. But we just had it this year. I was just telling you that was $145,000 last year. That software that is on number 1447 is to be able to monitor who's in the hallway at what time during the school day and to assign during our advisory period. And then we had just some... We had state cross-country lodging for the Holiday Inn Express at Shawnee this weekend where they'll be running the state cross-country meeting. Then payroll encumbrances are going to be really change orders for the encumbrances. Then, as you go over to number five, these are change orders once again. We don't have any really that move up except for the fleet washing expenses at LD's SUDS and Company. And then there's really not a whole lot else in there that is a change. Well, the Q heat and air software update from Train, we'll get to that in the building maintenance report. But we had to update the software in the Q's computer so that we could maintain the temperatures and monitor it. That was a little... That stuff was a little bit ancient. I think it came over on the Mayflower or when I was principal, whichever one was further away. You go on down and over on page six and seven, those are additional encumbrances that we may have had for extra duty or for taxes. But whenever you look at the report total encumbered on payroll, it's minus $46,048.26. Okay, over on the building fund on page 11, I'd like to bring a couple of things to your attention. We had Glenn's Electric had to do electrical services for the district, and that was pretty much at the Q, and we went ahead and encumbered in case we needed more electrical services during the year. We are... We have Midwest Bus that's repairing buses 222 and 322 because the hoods were worn out and their brackets had to be replaced from going over the county roads. And we are fighting buses pretty hard. If you look at our transportation report week to week, we've had two or three that we've had down for a little bit on activity fun... On activity buses. One of them we're supposed to get back this week and possibly right after fall break we should get the other one back. The repair to the lights at Old Fields, $5,000 for Shawnee Lighting, they came in and fixed the light. We had bulbs out for a long time and my wife said, "You know, you gropped about that all the time. You hadn't done a thing about it." So that was on one of the lists she gave me, I guess. And then we had to fix a... We're encumbering on Texoma Builders Supply. These are the door people. They'll come in and they're going to put a new door in, security door, where we redid the gym over at Gilmore. And that will allow us to be able to totally shut that building down if we have all the kids and have to go into the cafeteria. We also will have another one from Texoma Builders because they have to come in and they're going to have to come in and plane the new doors in the part that we've redone to this point. And the reason they are is because it's been wet enough this year. I mean, it didn't feel like this the last couple of years, but they've swelled and we've had people caught inside the rooms and we've had to work to get them out. It's not a good system. Fire control, we always have something from them. Over on 2103 on page 12, repair to the DBC toilets changed from commercial toilets to residential from rag, heat, and air. When they put that in there, they didn't put commercial toilets in there. That's a problem. Not a good one either. And then we had to have Index come out and work on the front door and doorbell at... Over at Gilmore. And on 13, page 13, 2206, out of child nutrition is to Swisher Beef Company for the agriculture grant. We got this 100% reimbursed to buy hamburger. It seems to have been a pretty good hit. And we've had several local people besides Mr. Swisher that have inquired about the possibility of joining our grant program. They're in it, so we're going to have to figure it. We need to find somebody who'll raise pigs or chickens because that would really cut down some of our costs, make it a little fresher. And then we come into child nutrition, once again payroll. Whenever we get to the treasures report, we're really holding our own better. Our cash flow's not what we quite want it to be right now, but we're in not as tight a place as we were whenever I first joined you. And we're carrying... We've been carrying pretty consistently $3,251,000 in the accounts. That's all accounts put together. We got down pretty low at one point last year, but we're refreshing. If you look at your big spreadsheet on the revenue trends, where we're at right now is we are at $2,655,000 on new rev... On total revenue versus $6,633,000 last year. But that's all due to carryover, so you've got to throw that out. So we're looking at new revenue. And we've got $3,273,000 on the 2025, and we've got $2,188,000 collected year-to-date on 2026. If you look on up, part of the reason for the 2026 being lower is if you look at 3212, you'll see that we've got state aid paid salary is not there. We knew that. We built that into the budget. If you look up at gross production, we're $70,000 below what we were this time last year, but we're a whole lot closer to total collection because we dropped that. This is going to get interesting to see what happens as Saudi Arabia and Russia and all our OPEC-plus friends decide on what they're going to do next to try to get more money. They could fool around and drop the oil price out, but I think we'll be... I think we're going to be okay. One point that I do want to point out that is pretty hopeful for the community. If you'll know, county apportionment number 2200, last year was $9,121,000 at this time of the year. This year it's $19,449. That's a tax... That's a county mortgage tax. So that means that our portion of the county mortgage tax is higher than what it was this time last year by almost $10,000. That means more houses are moving. We're... Everything else is pretty much hanging the same. We're not really seeing a whole lot of difference. On the second page, the part that we have control over, this is our expenditures through September 28. We're looking at $3,152,000 is what we've spent year-to-date. Last year we'd spent $3,848,000. So we're $695,000 through, and we've got two adminis... Two full-time... Full-year payrolls, one, two 11-month payrolls, and one everybody payroll. So really what this is telling us is that we were right at $475,000 last month, so we've moved up to $695,000 that we're showing in savings over year-to-date. And if you've noticed, we're $87,000 less year-to-date in salaries, $68,000 less year-to-date in burdens. And services, that would be things we pay for like whatever we were doing with Jody Hall and all those guys. The supplies were higher on it, but we also bought some math books and some things like that that you kind of need, and those are going to be higher at this point in the year. If you'll look at the pie graph, on the pie graph you can see that our expenses, services, and services are lower right now. We're 28% of our expenditure budget being services, whereas 21% would be supplies. And then burdens and salaries wind up being right at 50%, but that's because we don't have that many payrolls within this particular budget. The percentage of salaries and burdens will move on up to about 79% by the time we're done, is what we're projecting right now. On the next page, this is our month-to-month comparison from last year to this year. And this really is a more telling statistical feature of where we're supposed to be at. And it's really kind of fun when your numbers turn out pretty close to where they're supposed to be at. If you'll note, we're $45,000 less in salaries, $51,255,000 less in burdens, $27,000 less in year-to-date services, $10,000 less in supplies. Dues and fees are $1,400 less, so our net expenses are $109,580 less year-to-year. Whenever you go in and you look at the machines, actual set with the... With what our encumbered numbers are out to this year. Whenever we looked at the budget, we were looking at $12,105,000. We're totally encumbered right now at $12,240,000. And if we don't have major disasters like having to replace air conditioners and heaters and stuff like that, we should maintain this somewhere within $500,000 to $600,000 according to suit right now if everything works. The big thing that we need to realize is that this is probably... This graphic right here is probably what we're going to be looking at by the end of the year except the supplies and the services will be a little bit smaller. But we're looking at 58 to 22% on the budget. Last year, due to the supply... Due to the supplies and on this particular budget, this particular month, we were actually looking at 74%, but this is a pretty sustained budgetary... This is a sustainable budget for our amount of revenue that we have. Whenever we go over and look at the activity funds, once again, we're extremely blessed with what our activity funds are showing right now. We've got... Everybody's in pretty good shape as far as what it looks... The way it's looking. We don't have any major stressors right now. Total amount of activity funds, it's somewhere around $796,000. $736,000, I'm sorry. I'm transfiguring numbers in my head. But $736,809.12, and we're staying pretty consistent on that. And the athletic director's fund that Mr. Lundell is over is continuing to show growth, and we had really dropped a whole lot in that particular fund over the last couple of years. Well, we're at $35,401.66. Paying more than about $12,000 last year at this time?
Yeah, it's about $8.
Yeah. So we've... Mr. Lundell's... I mean, that's a balanced... That's what the power ice cream is, guys, because he sells a heck of that ice cream. Any questions?
I don't have any.
You give a motion to Adam F.
I might motion him to Adam F. A second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. G Superintendent's report.
Go ahead, McCaffrey.
I'm going to try to make this quick because I have a lot of things that we've been doing and going to do soon. So number one, we've all been working... I'm sure you're going to hear all of us say this, but we've been working on accreditation, reporting, and class size, and October 1 reports. And one of the things that we've been looking into is our dropout report. So we have to upload documentation to show, you know, if students leave or, you know, so we can show where they're at. And so that's one thing that I'm still working through, and I think some of these others probably will say the same thing. But we were able to go ahead and upload for three, but there's an additional five that we're working on, so we're just going to keep working through that and hope that we can resolve that. They actually weren't dropouts, but if we don't have information like where they went after they left us, because if they move out of state, we don't necessarily always know. Anyway, so we're working through that. We talked... We've been talking with Mr. Evans. We're going to be surveying teachers to see about our Stars Program to see if that's something that we want to reapply for in the coming years when it's time. You know, so we'll be getting teacher input to see how they feel about that. Overall, I do think that it has been a really good program to have, but we'll see kind of what our staff members think as well. So at Gilmore, we just implemented a new thing called the Stunning Staff Award. Actually, our first grade team came to me with this idea. It's something that we wanted to be able to highlight the amazing things that staff do day in and day out. And so this is just a way for us to recognize them. We recognize them once a week, and they hand it off to the next person. So they get to choose, you know, it's peer decided. So that's... It's been really great to be able to recognize all the great things. And they always write up some little thing and we announce it to everyone each Friday. So that's been something fun that we've started. Tomorrow is the big cookie dough delivery day at the Kingfisher County exhibit building, so if you see lots of traffic there, that's what we're doing. And then this Wednesday is Walking Wednesday. It's put on by the Kingfisher Collaborative, but it is a fun way for our students to walk to school. So usually we meet kind of midway at that Clearview Circle. And Q and Heritage go one way, and Gilmore we go another way, so the students really enjoy doing that. This week is Fire Safety Week, and so the fire department comes out and they put on a little presentation for our students. So we did pre-K and kindergarten today, and that's a highlight because they get to see all the gadgets and they get to walk through the fire truck and see what that's all about. And then tomorrow they'll be coming back to visit with first grade. Like Mr. Evans said, we do have mini cheer clinic this week, so our littles will be performing at halftime of the game Friday, and that again is a lot of fun. Our teachers are really working hard preparing for conferences next week. I can't believe it's here, but it is. And so I know they're all working very hard to be able to give parents, you know, reports of where their students are at next week. And then we have fall break, and then after that is Red Ribbon Week. And so I'm sure I'll talk more about that next month, but we have some fun things planned for that week to promote education on Red Ribbon Week. So that's it, Gilmore.
Thank you.
A lot of the same. You know, pickaxe tomorrow. As far as the dropout rate, I had a couple of those were resolved, so I'm at zero. Fire Safety Week, so we'll have Tuesday afternoon and Wednesday that the fire department will come to Heritage. Like she said, kiddos love that. Mini cheer clinic, same for our kids. We do that in the afternoon, and then they perform on Friday. One thing that we have at Heritage that's different is we have the lead room for our multi-handicapped students, and they're all housed there. They have started... Well, they always work on transition skills, but they start on Fridays. They started working particularly on a coffee bar. And so they've come up with a menu and they put that out for the teachers, and they serve the teachers coffee. They do a cold brew and hot on Fridays. So that's been something that they've been working on. They have to go through the different steps of everything that they need to do, measuring and all the things. So it's been a really good learning experience, so we've been excited about that. On Friday, we had our August and September jacket roundup. And so at Heritage, we... I'm pretty locked down there, you know. We don't let anyone come in except if there's something special going on like that. So the kiddos that got their awards, they... Their parents got to come in, and we recognize the Math Masters kiddos as well, but they came in and we celebrated them, so that was fun. Another thing that is starting at... This is going to be county-wide, but we are hosting this at my school. But for the county, we have a... The district special ed directors have a meeting every month. And we... I brought this up because it was something that I wanted to start, but it's better as a county. So we just decided that we would come together and have a parent night every month and talk about different aspects of disabilities, whether it be just something that the parents need, whether it be a particular disability or whether it be just a resource for the parents. So this month, of course, October is Dyslexia Month, Dyslexia Awareness Month, so we're doing Dyslexia Night. The... We haven't nailed down the night. It's going to be the 23rd or the 28th, but I will have that nailed down in the next couple of days. But it will be at the auditorium at Heritage. I will have that on Facebook. We're going to... I'm going to have flyers that I can give to each of the schools for parent-teacher conferences, but I will have... Our take-flight specialists will be there, and the lady that we contract with for take-flight, she's also in charge of Dyslexia Oklahoma. And so she'll be there and she'll, you know, help us. And so that's going to be, I think, a big thing for the county. One other thing I want to do is give a shout-out to the PTO that is for Gilmore and for my school. When she said parent-teacher conferences, we have two ladies that are phenomenal, that just...
They're amazing.
They're wonderful. I mean, one of them is my sister-in-law, but I'm not just saying that because she's my sister-in-law. But they just really... I mean, my teachers have just been thrilled. They just come up with neat ideas. I would never think about that stuff. It's just really neat. But they are getting together the meals, you know, for parent-teacher conference nights and things like that. And it just takes a weight off of our shoulders, and they come up with neat little things, just fun little things for the teachers, so I'm appreciative of them. But I think that's... I think that's all for...
Can I add one thing that I mentioned? We are having a literacy night on parent-teacher conference. Are you guys doing that as well?
Yeah.
So this is something our literacy grant has put on. They're going to have basically a literacy night happen while parent-teacher conferences are happening. So any school-aged children that show up with their parents, they can come to that instead of go to the conference because sometimes that's tough to have a conversation with teachers and parents when there's, you know, kiddos. So that's something that we've... They're starting, so I look forward to that.
Yeah, that's been circulating on Facebook, I know a lot, so...
On your evening, county, is that... So are all the county schools meeting here, or is everybody doing their own?
No, all of us here.
Okay, all schools are...
Yeah, so they'll all advertise at their schools, and then I'll advertise on Facebook and post that as a county-wide. Yeah, so...
So the literacy night, what will they do?
So they'll do like little literacy activities. Like at my school, it might be working on letters and letter sounds or maybe just reading a special children's book, just different little activities that they can do, you know, in about a 15-minute window while their parents are at the parent-teacher conference, so...
Yeah. Okay, so the beginning of mine is a lot of the same. The dropout report, the Q right now has zero. The Walking Wednesday is coming up. We're also doing the mini cheer camp, and we recently celebrated... We're also doing the mini cheer camp, and we recently celebrated on Friday, our students that, our student of the months, and then those that qualified for the Q Cafe that were chosen by teachers. The fourth grade participated in the Conservation Day with the Kingfisher County Conservation Board on Friday, and that was a lot of fun. They were at the, down at the park. STEM and Ms. Kewen have partnered with OERB and Energize Learning, and they're doing a lot of hands-on learning activities, and the kids are really enjoying that. The Q News has kicked off, that's also Ms. Kewen. She has a group of students who broadcast news, and they did their first edition recently, and it was very cute. We also have five SWARM mentors through the Kingfisher Education Foundation, and those will begin this week, working with their students. And coming up this month, it's lots of busy stuff. We're going to the Pumpkin Patch, we have Red Ribbon Week. Fifth grade is putting the final touches on the preparations for Camp Goddard, which will be in the first week in November. And then, our fundraiser, the Nothing Bump Cakes, we will start selling the last couple of weeks in October, and they'll be delivered right before Thanksgiving.
Drop out...
You don't have to show your picture.
Dropout rate, oh, I know. Dropout rate for the junior high, we have seven, three of those we've submitted paperwork, and we'll look at the other four. We couldn't, it didn't have a place for us to submit paperwork, but I think Don's trying to clear, clarify that with the State Department. Then, our jacket journal, one handsome guy on the front of that.
I could've shaded.
Our seventh graders work hard to put this out, they're on the back of it. You'll also notice the library in here. Ms. Chandra has worked hard to decorate the library. Tonight, our football team's in Perry, I don't know how they're doing yet off the internet, I expect that they're gonna... But, a lot of the same, like, I don't want to repeat what the...
There's this...
Yeah, that's, I was excited. Art, our, Ms. Muggenberg is doing some really fun stuff with art. They have some pumpkins that they decorated down at the end of the hall, if you guys get a chance to walk down there, and kind of look in, and some other neat projects that they do. We had Spirit Week a couple of weeks ago, a lot of kids participated in that, but we've been transitioning some of our athletes from, especially our girls, from softball going into basketball, and getting them around where they need to be. But, really, really, for the, going up to this part, far into the year, it's been a tremendous year. We've got really great kids, so I'm excited for the rest of the year, too.
At high school, when the dust settles with documentation, like they said, high school will have three dropouts to report, which, this is my third October, to be here, and that will be the fewest number by quite a few. And softball, this past weekend, they ended a really, really strong season. Coach Dutton did a really, really good job with our ladies this year, had a final record of 25 and 10, and, I mean, competed all the way to the very end, and just, things didn't go their way, but really proud of the effort they put on this year. Cross country is going well, and our lady jackets have done some good things, I think, at a pre-state meet at North Ark Creek, they placed third. So, that's one of the meets that really matters for potential placement and qualification. Football's off to a good start, 4-1 the other night. They had one fumble and one punt, but scored on every other drive. Really, really had to think rolling on offense, man, offensive side of the ball.
JV's doing pretty well against Bethany.
Yeah. Cheer was regional runner-up to qualify for state, and then we had two cheerleaders that at regional tryouts made the all-region team, and will participate this week for all-state cheer, and that was Avery Snyder and Haley Eden. We hosted 33, we had 33 tables set up for colleges, universities, different recruiters for the military, so hosted a county college fair. We had Hennessy, Dover, and Okarche, Lamega, and yeah, had a really good turnout there, and had, I mean, from all over the state, some out-of-state, so it's really, really cool for them to get to hear about different options for their post-grad. And then, my last thing is, speaking of post-grad, we had three of our recent Kingfisher graduates that were honored as top 20 freshmen at OSU, and those three are Ashley Casillas, who is applied exercise science, Kylie Hood, who is agribusiness and political science, and Chloe Blair, who is agribusiness and finance. So, tremendous honor to be recognized in the top 20 OSU freshman.
And Ms. Blair was caught in lunch.
Yeah.
Keep it inside, but also, fun, was it last, was it last year that Goddard and the FFA had their first, sort of like they bred and had their first set of pigs at the barn down there? And so, one of the, one of the pigs that they bred at the barn took Reserve Grand Barrel at Tulsa.
Was a reserve champion.
Reserve champion, yeah, reserve champion.
Reserve champion white pig, wasn't it? Wasn't it 100 for chill now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Reserve champion, and it was...
That's tough, too. That is a lot of pigs up there.
Yeah. Just look at it, it's kind of cool that they bred it at school farm here, and it's all been there twelve times.
Yeah, that is pretty cool.
It's in Arkansas now.
Oh, one thing that we didn't mention, that we'll talk about here in a little bit, is the burgeoning number of children in daycare, which is really kind of nice. We like, we like our staff to bring their children to us, but we have to look at a few things, but we'll talk about that here.
Just out of curiosity, how many do we have in the private program?
Um, yeah, I, so we've had a couple that have, I think, two that have been added to the full-time, and both of those students would have gone to Epic or K-12 if not. And then, we've actually had a few students that we've pulled out of the EXPAND program, which is like the individual class, just because it just kind of wasn't going very good, so we pulled them out, put them in a normal class, or found something, you know, where maybe it's a class they can take later or something like that. So, and that was English specifically, but, yeah, those numbers, we've, we've lost a few on the individual classes and gained two on the full-time.
So how many do we have running, right now, about 15?
On the full-time, yeah, and then, you know, we're down to five or six that are taking individual classes. So, and like, three of those are taking an AP class.
Yeah, and that's going well.
Mm-hmm, yep.
That's really that successful.
Yeah, Q has...
Three now. We have one enrolled today.
Okay. Oh, that's right, yeah, because we have, we had one family, like, they're moving to Ohio, and when they go to Ohio, they're gonna be doing online school, and with the mood and stuff like that, mom wanted them to get activated to that, and so, that was one in my building and one in her building. And then, Chris just still has the one, and I had another high schooler that just needed to work and do more for home, and so, went full-time for drive.
Ready for H?
Yes, sir.
Discussion, possible action on authorization and negotiation with First United Bank. Have Norman to purchase the remaining settlement in Leclun Berry versus Kingfisher for the purpose of retiring the settlement in fiscal year 2027.
This has taken a lot of work to get here, and you gentlemen that are at the table, and Ms. Goldbeck have been instrumental in this, and I appreciate your, you letting me play with numbers to the point where we could get here. The current amount due is about $2 million on principal, and there's a little bit of interest left, this, the interest bill, the interest we paid last year started over this year. We'll receive enough revenue into the sinking fund and general fund to complete this proposed purchase in January or February, if everything works like it's supposed to. We believe that where we're at right now, conservatively, we're pretty confident in that, in this number, because of the percentage of payment taxes that we have in Kingfisher. We're sitting around 93% to 93.5% of our patrons pay their taxes, and most of those come in in the first grade. We don't have a whole lot to carry on anymore. Our goal in this purchase would be to invest back in our community and not place a third year of judgment on the tax laws. We'll absorb it. What we'll probably wind up doing is, we'll probably have, we'll probably have to buy three to six months' worth of interest, but if we have to buy three to six months' worth of interest with what our, what our goal is on this, it will keep it off the tax provision. And that'll remove somewhere around $15,000 of tax provision. The payment will be primarily through the sinking fund collections and general fund, and what we'll probably do is to avoid transferring money from sinking, from the general fund to the sinking fund, we'll probably do it from KK, which is an investment form, and rotate that money through KK to pay for it, and then the sinking fund, we pay back the general fund gradually. That way, that'll keep our bookkeeping separated. We're gonna, we're gonna have to work with Britain, Calcatano Miller, because they're our auditors, along with the Center for Education Law, and find the best way to execute the purchase, and the reason is, we want to make sure we do this correctly. And I've already contacted version now to find out what the cost is, I did that in May of last year, and this payment's due somewhere around, wasn't it June last year or was it May?
February.
Was it February? Okay. So, that'll mean that we'll be moving along on this pretty quick. I want to make one point very clear. We built our revenue expenditure budget towards this, and we wanted to make sure that we were able to move forward with this, and we need to move as quickly as we can, or to make this work. Are there any questions?
I'd just like more of a comment to say, I think it would be appropriate to give some gratitude to the Excess Board for giving us the full miller this time, and I think it's responsible for our side to do our part to eliminate this for next year. I think you've done a lot of work as well, Mr. Evans, and I think that's notable as well, so kind of thank everybody on the board, and I think Charles talked about it, I mean, everybody was thinking outside the box, and I think altogether as a community, that's a big win that eliminates a year three of a bad situation, so...
Yes, sir.
I think that's just a, you know, it's worth sharing with everybody that they understand that everybody, everybody's got a part, and good job to everybody, honestly.
We have a motion on H.
Oh, we, we're making a motion to, we're good to make a motion.
To authorize negotiations.
To authorize negotiations.
Oh, I'll make a motion for that. I'll make a motion for, to provide him H.
I'll second. All those in favor? Motion passes. All right, discussion of Inspire Grant.
We got good news last week. Inspire Grant is, is a performance grant for the, for Indian Ed, and it comes directly from federal government, and the value of this is somewhere around $1.6 million. And what we're doing with this, the primary goal is to scaffold our literacy grant over towards math, and then also to provide Native American students with advanced, with advanced work to be able to get ready to go to postgraduate careers, and receive training in career tech, or go to college, or whatever, whatever it is they're trying to do that will meet their criteria. We identified several staff members that have Native American cards, and they are, they're going to be primarily involved in being the advocates for the program, or they're a minority that will be at, that will be working with this. The big thing that we have here is, this is the opportunity to remove some money from, move some salaries over into this program, and possibly add some more, some more depth under our literacy program, because our math scores need to come up, and that's what we're working towards, but we want to have a better rollout than what we did on the literacy grant, because the State Department gave it to us at the last minute in April, and didn't give us, didn't give us time really to get our teachers ready for it. On this, this will be a whole lot closer work with our teachers. Like they said, we also will be, we also will need to survey the parents to find the level of interest in continuing our Stars programs, because those would be an actual dovetail into this, but if our teachers are tired and they're not ready to do it, we're probably gonna have to shutter that program, but I do think we probably will have enough teachers that will be interested in continuing Stars. A big thank you to Mrs. Redwine, she did a really good job of writing this. I read the scores on the actual grant, and we got 19 out of 21. That's incredibly high school.
Here we go.
No action.
Discussion, possible action to change the high school counselor, secretary to Kingfisher Public Schools registrar, and a separate payment column in Kingfisher Support Employment Scale.
Yes, we, Ms. Lethemwell came to me, I guess it was about a month and a half ago, and asked me about the possibility of changing the role of her secretary, and the reason that we needed to change the role of her secretary is because we have a whole lot more paperwork that she's having to do now, especially whenever you get into looking at the career tech graduation changes, requirement changes that we've made, the concurrent enrollment that we have, the addition of the parchment materials that, you know, we have several consolidated schools within our district, and believe it or not, we still get, we still get some requests, not very, not as many as we used to, but we still get some requests for high school records from those consolidated districts. That'll probably timeout in the next year or two, but still, yet, she does have to be able to do that, and she has to consolidate the records for all debt and thrive, and there's, there's a lot of work there that we didn't have five years ago, and it's grown immensely, and that's why we're, that's why I'm coming to you and asking you to put this new category into the support staff.
I'll make a motion to approve item J.
I'll second. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, report on findings on leaks in all schools, and the DBC report on HVAC work at the Q.
Okay. After our last big rain event, we had leaks everywhere, and the principals and their secretaries and their, and their custodians, and maintenance went around, and we marked where the leaks were, and they were many a multitude. And when we had our, when we did our estimate of needs, I had a few questions from you guys about those leaks. And my concern was that we're starting to see leaks over basketball floors, and I really don't want to have to deploy an octopus to try to dry out a basketball floor during the middle of school week, especially if we get a heavy snow load. So, what we're looking at is, we had three different companies come in, and we started this process actually back in the summer, and they, everybody looked at the height, at every, all the buildings, and said that for the most part, we don't really have enough damage to facilitate an insurance claim. And I talked to Pat about it and he said, well, that's good. I said, well, but I still got leaks. And he said, well, what are you going to do about the leaks because you got to secure that building? And one of my, well, Jay Edlin is the superintendent of Rappel Butler, and he uses Crawford Roofing for his, for his maintenance program to keep his roof from leaking. But Crawford showed up and they got up on top of the DBC and they brought a ladder long enough to do it. Mr. Ferris was out there whenever they did it. He wouldn't go up for some reason. I don't understand. But it's a long ways up there, in case you didn't know. They brought that ladder in on a, on a trailer. And they looked, he looked up there and he said, I'm not seeing that we got damage, but there is a spot in the middle of the roof where we have an overlay. One piece of metal on top of the other, and we're getting water in underneath it. And that's where part of the leaks are coming from and we're getting a little water on the edges. And he said, that, he said, what he would recommend is that we put TPO over it, which is polyvinyl plastic, which is what we've got over these roofs. But does kind of make your building look like a marshmallow because they have to come in and they put, they put insulation down to raise it up to where it's a flat surface. And it's really more like styrofoam. And if you get a hailstorm, it's going to show the dents and you're going to see the dents pretty well on that. So I had, I talked to Jody Hall and they had a gentleman that lives here in town that they recommended that does metal roofs. And he brought, he didn't bring a ladder, he brought a man lift because he didn't want to climb the ladder, which I think is probably pretty smart. And he followed all the safety rules, just like Yara. She would have been real proud. And he got up there, he was up there for about forty-five minutes to an hour. And it was hot that day, but he would, he went over it. And what we've got, he gave a better explanation of what he was seeing than Crawford did. He said that we have screw holes where they missed the purl when they were putting the, the sheet in the roof. We, he confirmed the overlaps. And he had a zip tie that he was, that he carries with him. And he could stick, stick the zip tie in underneath the, the overlap and get it in there. He said, that's why you got water because it's rolling back, you know, it's wicking back up in there. And what he recommended was doing a metal maintenance system. And the metal maintenance system would be, they come in, they, they would caulk all the holes that we have in the roof. And then they would also come in and change, take the screws out, put new screws in with new washers and get it to where it doesn't leak. And they will take the covering off that metal bridge where those panels overlap and then come back and fix it correct, fix it better. You're just not going to fix that until we do something different over the top of that roof, either replace it or put a metal overlay. And he reck, he said, you know, you could probably put a metal overlay on that roof that will match everything else that you've got. And you can do it for about a hundred and twenty thousand. I think you probably wanted to do the TPO for about a hundred thousand. So that would be, but I don't have any bids on that or quotes on that yet. The other thing that we found was that this building and the Q do have probably right at the amount of, amount of damage from hailstorms that we might be able to go in and get a claim. But the Q was just redone in 2022. And we probably need to go in and do a patch, patch type maintenance system. And I talked to another, Crawford told me about his maintenance program on top of the roofs. And Next Step Roofing that did the Baptist Churches Connection Center over here, they came in and they've looked at it. And what I've told them both that we need to do is we probably need to come in, number one, the Heritage Auditorium leaks where that wall is. And it's because that over the years, I think that thing is eighty years old, seventy years old, somewhere in there. And where that auditorium butts up against that building, we've got leaks because the, because the mortar has shrunk up over the years. So we need to either seal that or put a metal cap over to stop water from intruding into Heritage and into the auditorium. The next issue we have is that we don't really have a strong inventory of our HVAC units on top of the roof. And we need an inventory and we need to see what the damage is and we need to have OC, we need to be able to present that to OC so that we have, we have a record of what everything went on. And they can even come out if they want to and go across with them. But we don't really have a good way because we don't have those HVAC units numbered to where we can tell who worked on what, when they worked on it and what was done to it. And we've got to get to that system because HVAC, HVAC is one of the most expensive things that we deal with on a daily basis. And if we could get that fixed where we could see what was going on and have pictures around it so somebody drops a tool and punctures a roof, we've got, we've got records of what it looked like before they went up there and after they went up there. So I proposed that to both companies and they're supposed to give me a price. My guess is it's probably going to be somewhere between forty and sixty thousand a year to keep that maintenance program that come in, that clean the gutters out. If we have a leak, they're going to come in, take a water hose, they're going to run that water hose on there until they find what the leak is. And then they'll put PVC patch over it because that, that's what will solve that problem. And it probably will extend our roof life another ten, another ten years before we have to do roofs again. And that helps our insurance because we don't have the quotes. The DBC is a beautiful facility and I did talk to Mr. Snodgrass about it because I know he put considerable amount of money into that. And I, I explained to him what we were looking to do. And his answer was, well, I donated that to the school. I don't really, I don't really need to have that kind of input. But I think when you do have people that help, you need to, you need to visit with them. One other thing that we have a problem with is APB. If you've talked to a girls' basketball coach or a girl that has anything down in the locker room, I'm seeing nods of agreement over here, we get water in there. Well, when we were looking at it, Jody Hall came up and took a look at it. And part of our problem is the bathtub that we've got in between the two buildings. And we're holding water and it's coming back up. But the other issue we have is we have the issue of weep holes, weep, weep slots in that, in that brick. And that water's coming back up and that's what, that's where it's going down. And then there's cracks in the concrete where the concrete started to pull away a little bit. It's natural, it happens in concrete. And we need to bring in somebody to come in and do some industrial type caulking all the way around that thing and get that done. I've had, I've had, I've got a guy that's coming to take a look at that, but amazingly, industrial caulkers are very busy people. I did not know. But we really need to look at that in the roof leak and APB over the, over the east school. But we are on, we are on the track of, of trying to find a solution to these things. The biggest thing that I'm seeing right now is that we've got to make sure as we do this that it's affordable. And we've got to make sure that our solution is long range so that we have plans so we know what's going on. One other thing that we're dealing with is the playgrounds at the Q, the playgrounds at Heritage and the playgrounds at Gilmore. And we're getting quotes on trying to remediate some of that, those things. We're going to have to make some concrete walk, walkways over at Gilmore because whenever we did the work on the first part, the first, is it two stages of Gilmore? Because there were, they, so whenever they did that, they rewrote it, some water is going across the playground and the kids are having a hard time getting there whenever it's wet. And, you know, we want rain. So we really need to probably come in and do, do concrete pathways. I talked to the guy that's bidding it today and he, or quoting it today, and he didn't, he was more worried about the Heritage Playground than he was the Gilmore Playground because the Heritage Playground has goat heads big enough to scare your average rugby player off ever playing rugby. It's really pretty tough. Those kids are pretty tough over there. We're looking at two options. Well, number one, moving the actual playground equipment over to the old football field and, or looking at what the cost to turf that in underneath so we don't have to worry about the issues of having, having goat heads. And the soccer, where they play soccer, we're going to have to do something with that. So probably we're going to have to invest in some pretty good turf, not real turf, I mean, real turf like sod to get that fixed. And we've talked about this. We've got washes coming off of the football field that we really need to fix in the driveway because as my wife told me, if you was giving me my list, she almost lost, you know, she almost drove off into that ditch before we got it cleaned up. I got in a lot of trouble over that and we had to go fix that. So that, and we also have one other issue.
Real quick, on the, I saw on the, on the day that we had this amount for spraying, will that help with the?
Yes.
The goat heads also?
Yes, we sprayed for goat heads. And the thing we're going to have to do is we'll talk to Lewis with Weed and Lawn Service and see if they can use a bagger to bag up those goat heads whenever they're, when they're doing that. And yeah, we did spray that. And one of the things we're working on this winter is getting Stan and Nick and I, I've got to re-up my commercial spraying license and get Stan and Nick, when we can do that on our own, we just can't have somebody else to do that because we can, we, as many acres as we have to take care of, we really need to be doing that on our own. We can do that a whole lot cheaper than ten thousand dollars because that's, that winds up being, well, commercial applications somewhere between seven fifty and eight fifty an acre, depending on who's doing it. And if you're pulling a hose, a tire, I mean, they've got, they've got one of those machines that they ride on to do it. But I really think we probably need to take a look at trying to bring that in-house. Like we're big enough, we probably need to look at that.
Did that spraying cover all five facilities?
Yes. Yes, and he got it done in a really timely manner. The rain that you're hearing right now will help a lot.
Sorry, there are?
No, 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 that's what this is about.
So what did Jody Hall have to say about the, the concrete between here and there? Because they're the ones who put that in.
There's, they had no comment whenever I asked them about that. There was, they just.
Because that came up when we built this building, if that was going to be an issue.
Yeah. Yeah, and it is. It is. I mean, we have to go in and make sure if we have a big rain event, somebody's got to go in and clean it up, clean it out. And if we have a surprise ice or snow event, somebody's got to figure out how to get down in there without breaking their neck to clean that drain as it, as it drains. The other issue that we have is that we have a lot of scuppers that come down that drain out into that and it just can't keep up. It's virtually impossible. And we're going to have to look at some concrete to protect our investment that we made in the high school last year of moving electricity around, fixing the electricity. And we're going to have to put some concrete drainers to get the water away from the buildings. I really thought that we might be able to take a skid steer out there and make a swale, but it was good enough to be able to take care of that. I don't think that's going to work for us. I think we're probably going to have to make it a little bit better than that to make sure that we're able to handle. You know, whenever we get rain sometimes, it's, we've had seven inches in four hours before. And we don't, we need to be ready for that kind of rain, even though it's not in the normal way. One last thing, as we look at these, this, Ms. Meyer and I have been visiting pretty consistently about daycare. We don't have enough room in the daycare house. And we're trying to find a place to put it here at the district so we don't have to go buy something because we don't need to because financially that would, that would hurt us. So we've looked at the administration building, which actually has more square footage than the little daycare house. And we've looked at a couple other spots around the district that we're still working on. But we probably are going to have to do a little bit of renovation if we do move it and then get it inspected. Have you got anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to do some renovation for DHS to, for them to okay it. I mean, there's just, you know, they have, they're a lot more strict than a school, so.
And, and I do that volunteer to move that, my son-in-law, I'll do that because that's a pretty small playground, we'll take it. That's all I got.
Remediation and dropout report?
As they told you during their principal's report, they have been working on their dropout, dropout rates. Could each one of you tell them what your drop, dropout numbers are right now?
For Gilmore, it was total of eight, but we were able to already go ahead and upload for three. But there's five that it's not allowing us to go and provide any documentation. That's kind of what Chris spoke to earlier. We're not sure why, so we're working on that. But again, a lot of it is due to, you know, like three of the five that we're still looking at, they finished the school year with us and then just didn't come back this school year. So really, they shouldn't be showing us that. And then two out of those, like one was a pre-Ker that left mid-year and pre-K's not mandatory. So again, that one, you know, we should really be able to provide documentation for that. And then the other one left and we all, we do have a records request. So, you know, I'm not sure why those aren't showing the way they are, but we're going to keep trying to figure it out.
I had two that showed up that I had records requests, so I just submitted those. I had three that was able to do records requests and one was a withdrawal for homeschool. So we have, we have zero.
I have seven, but three of those require documentation. So those are pending. One, one of the other four went, went back to Mexico. And the other three should be, we should have records requests for them. I think what we do is we mark them as coming back. And so in the system, it doesn't know what's happened to them because we, we assume they're coming back here and they didn't. So we should, when Dawn looks at that and we get the okay to submit and download, load the documentation, we should be able to take care of that.
The high school had twelve, five of those have already been cleaned up. And like what Chris said, we have four additional ones that will be removed with additional documentation. Those I can for sure say, we were anticipating them coming back and they didn't. And three of them, three of those four went out of state. One of those students did in fact drop out, but he went to GED test and passed it. And we have that certificate that we can submit to remove him as a dropout. So we'll get four more removed and I'll take the high school down to three.
And there's no action required with that. We just have to present the information.
Discussion, possible action on transfer capacity by site.
On, in your board agenda, we have the transfer capacity listed. This rec, this reflects our new staff size that we have. Um, this rec, this reflects our new staff size that we have. And we have, we'll be submitting this with the accreditation report.
And a motion?
I'll make a motion. Awesome.
All those in favor, motion passes. Discussion possible action to approve an out-of-state travel request for high school cheerleading to attend a choreography session in Amarillo, Texas on October eleventh and twelfth, 2025.
We had this come in for next year's choreography for state cheerleading. Uh, you have to start getting ready now. And, uh, they'll be taking, uh, schools, school transport. So that's why we brought this to you.
So they're going, is this this month or is it for 2026?
It's 2025.
Okay.
They're building towards, towards the fall of 2026 competition.
Is USM true?
No, that's what I was just clarifying, that it was actually next week.
I'll make a motion to approve item N. I'll second.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. Discussion possible action to approve the following board policies. DVCA, standards of performance and conduct for teachers. EGG, prohibition of race and sex discrimination in curriculum and compliance processes. And EGG dash E, prohibition of race and sex discrimination in curriculum and complaint process compliant form. FNC, student conduct. DOAC, support personnel suspension. Demotion, non-renewal or termination. GI dash R, advertising on school property.
Okay, um, most of these are due to new laws that are acting on July one. We just now got the, uh, board policies for you to, uh, update. And all of these have been sent to the teachers and support personnel on the, on the performance and conduct or the termination policies for the support. But I want to bring into, uh, I want to bring into, uh, clarity that on the standards of performance and conduct, they do have, uh, antisemitism, uh, specifically placed in there. And then if you go on over to page three and four, there is particular, particular language that would be on three D. Uh, knowing and willful failure to report suspected child abuse or neglect. We have done excessive, extensive training this year on, and last year, ever since I've been here, we've been training on this and what their reporting requirements are. Uh, this is a big deal for the administrators. It's even a bigger deal because for a teacher, it's a Mr. Mayor. For administrator, it's a fellow. And that kid, like I told the teachers at the start of school, I love all you guys, but I'm not going to lose my retirement over trying to cover for you. That's not going to work. And they'll expect us to, that's just not how that works. Um, as you look on the back page, on the very last, page four or five, it does talk about sexual acts and immoralities. We're doing training on this right now with our staff through, uh, O6 training programs. And, and it's our last, it's our last, uh, staff development on that. And it's not for the faint of heart. It's pretty hardcore. I've, I've watched part of it and it was pretty interesting. Um, they don't, they don't mince any words about what, what it looks like, what can happen and what will happen to you if you get caught. Um, and then the others are prohib, prohibit, prohibition of race and sex discrimination. That's basically Title IX. And this would be, uh, extending Wilson-Bowler protections and, uh, having the right to file a complaint. And it actually gives us the complaint form. And then as you move on over to the support personnel, DOAC, that gives the reasons that for dismissal. And once again, we come back to, uh, antisemitism. And we come back into, uh, disclosing public information, reporting a violation or any action without the support employee supervisor in the relevant chain of command. It protects them if they are trying to report something that they should be reporting. And it keeps the administration from silencing support people. Which I think that's important because if we're doing something wrong, we need to at least be willing to hear it. Um, advertising on school property, this is, uh, new from OSSBA. Uh, it went in, they, they sent it out to us on, in last, last couple of weeks. And we finally decided that we probably need to do it. And what it does is it keeps, it allows us to do advertising like on a video board or something like that. But it also keeps it to within the standards of what our community would expect a school to do. Which means no vulgarity, no, uh, no innuendo, things like that that are important. But it allows us to do more fundraising through advertising. That's the policies.
Any questions on any of those?
I'm good to approve item O.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. Discussion possible action on the following agreements. Quality choice testing, drug and alcohol testing, the Center for Ed Law Legal Services and Pioneer Long Distance Incorporated.
Okay, on drug and alcohol testing, it's what we have to have for bus drivers and it's what our board policy requires of students. Uh, but the same company does both Ted on students and on, on drivers. And they draw the, they draw the, uh, drivers at random unless they're new and then they have to be tested. Um, then whenever you look at the basic legal services agreement from the Center for Ed Law, this is precisely the same agreement we had last year. And they do a really good job. I talked to Laura Holmes, uh, last week, which is, I normally deal with Andy Fugit. Uh, but Laura called to check in on us on a couple of things. And, uh, they, they really are impressive. And then the contract renewal service for, uh, Pioneer Long Distance is our standard phone long distance.
Is that phone or internet?
Internet, I'm sorry. It comes out, it comes out E-rate. Which also covers.
I'll make the motion that we approve.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes. Discussion possible action on board meeting dates for 2026.
Uh, we took the board meeting dates from this year and we mimic them for next year. If you'll, if you'll note, the September meeting is September eighth, which will be the second Monday.
I'll make a motion to approve item Q.
I'll second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. New business?
I have none, sorry.
Announcements?
Um, fall break, we're one week and one day away. We'll be out next Wednesday. I really appreciate the efforts of the teachers and the, and the students because they've all worked really hard this, this first quarter. And we're, I'm anxious to, uh, see, see what our benchmark results are the next, uh, next November.
I might move, move motion in the chair. Is it eighteen? Second.
All those in favor, motion passes.